Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the December 18, 2023 City of Kalispell Council Meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Carlson?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham? Counselor Dowd?
Here.
Counselor Dahlman?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Hunter?
Here.
Counselor Nunley?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Dahlman, can you lead us again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look to council for approval of the agenda as it sits. Mr. Nunley?
I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Pose like sign. Who carries? Two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item are the council minutes from the December 4, 2023 meeting and ordinance 1916, the second reading for dusty acres zoning. This ordinance considers initial zoning of R4 residential for 51.8 acres on the west and east sides of Highway 93 North and to the south of Hagerman Lane. Is there any comment, public comment on either of the two items on the consent agenda? Seen none. Look to council for a motion. Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Nunley. Can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. We do not have a committee report this evening, so at this point, open the meeting for public comment. Any individual of the from the public wishing to address the council on items that are not on the agenda or has to step forward, state your name, and give the council your comments. Nobody online yet, okay. No public comment, so. Going to move on to the first action item, which is ordinance 1917. This is the second reading for Stillwater Bend Phase II Planned Unit Development. This item considers approval of a PUD overlay on 30.5 acres located at the western terminus of Rose Crossing to the west of Highway 93 North. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this was an item that was on our last meeting's agenda where we gave the full staff report presentation, had full council discussion. Normally, these would go on consent agenda. However, it was not a unanimous vote. It was a six-two, which is why we put it back on the action item portion of it. So we typically don't give a full staff report on that second round, but we're more than happy to answer any questions council may have related to it. So with that, we present it for recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any questions for staff?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
Any other questions? Any public comment on ordinance 1917? Look to council for a motion. Mr. Hunter's ready, but I don't think he's ready. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move ordinance number 1917, an ordinance to amend section 27. Dot zero two dot zero one zero official zoning map, City of Kalispell zoning ordinance, ordinance number 1677, by creating a residential planned unit development to be known as Stillwater Bend Phase II PUD over certain real property, more particularly described as parcel B, a certificate of survey number 13982, situated in the southeast quarter of section 24 and the northeast quarter of section 25, township 29 north, township 29 north, range 22 west, PMM, Flaghead County, Montana, and a portion of Track 3, a certificate of survey number 12011, and a portion of the north half of the northeast quarter lying northerly and easterly of the Stillwater River of section 25, township 29 north, range 22 west, PMM, Flaghead County, Montana, and as more particularly described on exhibit A, in accordance with the Kalispell Growth Policy Planet 2035, and to provide an effective date.
Second.
Second. We'll give that to Mr. Nunley because it's just a touch louder. Have motion. Second any discussion on the motion? We'll go ahead and Mr. Hunter first then. Ms. Dahlman?
Thank you, Your Honor. I voted against the first reading for this one over objections to the reduction of the riparian buffer from 200, our standard 200 feet to 100 feet. I'll refer to those comments from the first reading and once again vote against this.
Be it Mr. Hunter. Ms. Dahlman?
Thank you. I'm pretty much the same. I voted against the first one. First reading as well. It's, the development's beautiful. Just the deviations to the Stillwater River was my objection. That's all.
Other discussion? Have a roll call vote.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Nay.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
No.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is Resolution 6176, Grandview Lift Station Bond. This resolution considers authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the acquisition, construction, and equi- and equipping of Grand, of the Grandview Lift Station in Four Mile Drive Force Main Project located within Four Mile Drive and Grandview Drive. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is an extenuation of projects approved during the budget process, capital, capital items, improvements to the Grandview Lift Station, and then also to a force main going along Four Mile Drive that essentially ultimately connects to the West Side Interceptor to take some of the capacity pressures off of trunk line A are part of what's going to be funded. Part of the budget process, we had bonds being issued for this project as part of the financing of it. Required to come before council to get that authorized. One of the nice things about this offering is working with DNRC. We anticipate 750,000 of this will be forgiven as we complete the project, so leaving us with about $850,000 for the project. So not only do we have favorable interest rates, but also looking at a sizable amount being forgiven with upon completion. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Russell, I have a few. Looking at this, I'm deeply concerned with comments from our governor and from, what is that institute? The idiot institute out of Bozeman? Does this get paid for out of the general fund, or is this like an enterprise fund? How will these be repaid?
Yeah, so these would be within our, ultimately within our enterprise funds, but you bring up a good point, not to hit a softball that you just teed up, but technically by their rationale, that $750,000 forgiveness they're putting out there, that that's wasteful spending, even though it's coming from the state, because it increases our budget, and that is the narrative coming from the state. They're not looking at the source of the funds that are impacting and growing our budget.
So, I guess the que- just to be clear, real estate taxes that get assessed in city residence cover our general fund.
Correct.
Anything associated with the growth that the governor really wants with housing, add housing, add housing, add housing, no more NIMBY, do everything we tell you to do to add housing. The cost to sustain that and maintain that and service that, we shouldn't be able to assess for? Is that the assumption that I'm hearing from my governor?
Well, I can't answer that question because I'm not sure exactly what cost centers you're talking about, so I don't have an answer for that.
Well, the costs of the enterprise fund, operating water and sewer.
Yeah, those are, those are all covered by rates or other sources of funds.
Now, I guess my question, the infinite wisdom of the governor, has he ever served on a city council before or even looked at a city budget to your knowledge, Mr. Russell?
Well, I would not have knowledge of that.
All right. I just question because I want to make sure that my governor appreciates what we do, because I'm damn well sure he doesn't understand a thing about what we do at this, at this dais, nor has he ever understood a city budget, nor has he probably ever looked at a city budget to understand. And I'm betting that Mr. Kendall Cotton, who loves to write letters to the editor about our tax and spend policies, has never sat in on a budget session with the City of Kalispell or any other municipality for that matter. Just want to make sure that this doesn't go to a bloated city budget, so.
Here, here.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Any public comment on Resolution 6176? Maybe the governor's here? No? Lieutenant Governor? No? Anyone from the Senate Tax? No. Okay. Local Government Committee? No? Okay.
Not yet.
They're online.
That's great. They're probably online. They probably don't even know how to listen. Look for motion on Resolution 6176. Ms. Carlson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move Resolution Number 6176, a resolution relating to $1,598,000 sewage system revenue bonds, DNRC Water Pollution Control State Revolving Loan Program, consisting of $750,000 subordinate lien taxable series 2024A bond and $848,000 tax exempt series 2024B bond, authorizing the issuance and fixing the terms and conditions thereof.
Second.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? No discussion. I'll just make one comment. I will vote in support of this reckless spending according to some people in the state, because it does serve to provide the necessary facilities to meet the growth that certain parties are demanding that we absorb. So I will vote in favor of this. Can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Now on to the next one of the governor's follies. Resolution 6177, Planning Commission Creation. This resolution considers design- designating the Planning Board and Zoning Commission as the planning commission is required by Title 76, Chapter 25, Montana Code Annotated, and dissolving the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is part of the compliance with Senate Bill 382 in terms of centralizing different functions within the planning and zoning fields. I'll go ahead and turn it over to PJ Sorensen, our senior planner, to kind of give a little bit more of the background and what exactly this does.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Council. As mentioned, this is one of the first steps under Senate Bill 382 or the Montana Land Use Planning Act. I think you're generally familiar. We've talked about that a little bit in the past, but in real broad terms, that Senate bill requires a number of cities, including Kalispell, to adopt a new land use plan and update subdivision regulations and zoning regulations in accordance with that act. Leading up to that, there's a couple steps that cities need to take. One is to form this planning commission. There's also a public participation plan that the current planning board is, is working on that would guide the public participation in putting those plans together. So what you have in front of you tonight is the creation of that planning commission or the board that's going to be shepherding this new land use plan through. It's set up under that act. It allows cities to designate an existing planning board, which we're choosing to do in our recommendation here. So your planning commission would have the same makeup of our current planning board. We have the same members on there, the same existing terms. We would be updating our bylaws just to make it line up with the new commission as opposed to the board. But largely, you'd have the same makeup that you'd have there today. One difference would be that when you look at the variance and zoning appeals section in that Senate bill, it requires those to go through staff and then on to the planning commission rather than through a board of adjustments. So that's why there's kind of two parts to what's going on here. One is creating that planning commission. The other is folding the duties of the Board of Adjustment into that planning commission. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Nunley?
Thank you, Your Honor. My understanding is there's been a lawsuit filed on this that potentially it is not constitutional to do this. If we go forward with this to change the commission and that lawsuit gets figured out and it's found that it is unconstitutional, will we just roll back or are we, are we stuck on a deadline? We have to do this today?
Well, I would say, yeah, it was just, just filed now, so there's a lot that needs to play out and how that goes and see how that happens. There is a timeline on this, so it was three years from the date that it was enacted, which was in May. So we're sitting here a little bit less than two and a half years, so we need to move forward with that. I don't know if John wants to add anything to that or not.
I would say that this is a step that we have to take to take other steps required by the act. At this point, that lawsuit could play out in a lot of different ways, so I would, I think it's kind of a wait and see approach, but we can, we can address it depending on what the court does there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of questions. One, just to clarify, so under the law, so variances won't come before a coun- council unless they're appealed or whatever, it stays with the staff review. Plats, preliminary plats, is that the same as well? And then PUDs? I'm just trying to understand which will now come to the council versus stay with staff.
So the first one was variances is right now, those variances currently don't come to council. They go through the Board of Adjustment, and that's kind of where it is. And if there's an appeal from that, it will go to, to district court. So any, under this new framework, any appeal of an administrative land use decision, which would include a staff decision on a subdivision once we're fully under 382, but that's still going to be a ways down the road, could then be appealed to the planning commission and then on to city council from there.
But none of them automatically come before the council like currently, like a PUD and stuff?
No, and, and, you know, we'll see on the PUDs, you know, annexations and zoning and PUDs are basically a zoning overlay district. So I think the presumption is that those would follow the same process. The biggest thing that's the change is, is the subdivisions.
Okay. And then it's my understanding that some of the other communities in the valley are opening up the application process for the planning commission, even re make, you know, making their members of the planning board reapply. They want to continue to be on. Given the fact that I think a lot of the discussion and concern around this process is going to be on the public participation side of it and public involvement, what is the reasoning for why we're just rolling over our members rather than reopening the application process and making them replay?
Well, part of it is the statute specifically allows you to do what we're doing here and by designating an existing board. And part of that was, you know, getting the process moving along, because we do have a pretty short timeframe on, on getting everything through here. I think the other part of it is that, you know, our board members have been pretty engaged in the planning process here. There's a lot of experience on that board, and it's a good mix that's on there, so. And the terms, the terms would come up anyway. There would be, I think, two or, I'm not sure if it's two or three that would be coming up in the spring. One reason we chose to do it right now was so we could get into the next regular cycle for appointments. So there'd be an opportunity if the council so desired to appoint somebody else coming up this spring.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any public comment on Resolution 6177? Seen none. Look to council for a motion. Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move Resolution Number 6177, a resolution of the City of Kalispell, Montana, to establish a planning commission as required by the Montana Land Use Planning Act, Senate Bill 382. Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just note, comment that I, I do think it might, you know, might have made sense to reopen the application process, and I understand that we don't get a lot of applicants for that, by allowing the existing members to reapply, just showing that, providing that opportunity for the public to apply, given the awareness of this bill and what's happening, to see if there's interest, see if there's other folks who'd be wanting to be considered for positions. Just to be as open as possible, that pub- public process, I, my thought, and given that the other communities are doing it as well, it seems to make sense.
Other discussion? Mr. Dowd?
I'm just amazed that we have been able to function so far without big daddy state coming in and letting, telling us how we should be doing things, so. Everything about 384 just rakes me the wrong way. I think we've been doing an amazing job here in Kalispell, and that's not really a discussion point, but I think it's more of a, just a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Other discussion items?
Yeah, I guess maybe to kind of push back a little bit on Councilman Hunter's viewpoint on this is, I, I kind of take the same stand, stance that, that staff does when it comes to the amount of knowledge that we currently have on the planning board. You know, a lot of people have been on there, you know, and, and have re-upped over the last couple of years. So going and, 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 I mean, I think you're talking about possibly having a complete flip on that board. I mean, we wouldn't, there'd, there'd be a, a stretch of time where there'd be just a learning curve that you'd have to be going through to go and understand, you know, how this stuff goes and how it works and everything, so I would not be for that. You know, and as you said, you know, that specifically allows for this, and I don't know about other, other ci- municipalities and cities around the valley here that, that have their boards. I don't know how they're made up. So, yeah, I would not be for that.
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, and I would just say whether or not there's a complete flip or not, of course, is the decision of the council with the applicants that you get. And of course, if the council were to want to honor the experience on the board and just reappoint, the, the point for me is the process and, and opening it up, you know, however that outcome comes out.
Okay. Other discussion? Mr. Nunley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm struggling on this one because I really don't want to vote for this at all. I think what the governor and the legislature and senate did in Helena this last session was a travesty in our state and a complete taking away of our citizens' right to their voice in this process. And I just, any foresight that, that we ever had in the community to grow it as a community, the governor and the legislature and senate worked so tirelessly this last session to totally strip us of a lot of this. I just, ultimately, I'm struggling to even vote for this at this point, so I just wanted to voice my frustration at this.
Other discussion?
Real quick.
Okay.
I, I can certainly get behind, you know, how you're feeling about that. You heard me at, you know, at League. I do kind of want to ask the question, though, the vote on this sets the commission, the, the process behind how, you know, developments and, and projects would come through, that's not a part of what this currently is. Because that's 382, so this is just setting the commission.
It's just a staff, basically, it's converting the existing planning board to the planning commission. So this specific step really isn't going to change much at all, but it does allow you to take additional steps under 382, and I think that the concerns about potentially bringing some of the public input out of that is when we're fully under that, maybe you're not reviewing subdivisions, but that's several steps and probably a couple years down the road.
For example, the public participation plan, which really will spearhead the whole planning, should be adopted by the planning commission, because that's kind of the start. So we need the planning commission to even then adopt the participation plan and, because that commission then needs to make a recommendation to council on basically everything as it moves forward. So, like I said, given the timeline, you know, that's, that's why we're proposing it this way. Certainly in the council, they could change the makeup of the commissioner board. We wouldn't recommend that, but certainly it could be an option in the future, because the, you know, it just, it seemed the simple way just to, to move forward with it, because we have had multiple discussions about the future, and a lot of the board members had been part of the growth policy in the past, so it's just a bit of consistency there.
I think the consistency is key. There are some other municipalities where the planning boards make decisions by their, dare I say, by the seat of their pants. What is the whim of the time, whether they like someone or something or not. Our commissions tend to follow what is written in black and white, and I think that consistency and that knowledge carrying over makes sense, especially as we look at what is playing field changing. Given what's happening with a couple, you know, we'll have a couple more replacements in the spring, so we'll have some new appointees. Some of the old members may even just look at this and be kind of disgusted and say, we don't want to participate anymore. So I'd be more inclined to try to maintain the consistency and that turnover within the board on the normal schedule. So I'm, you know, I agree with staff on this one and would prefer to see that, and then with just the, with the normal turnover coming in the spring, just to maintain that consistency, so. Other discussion? Cover, a roll call vote.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. City manager report. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, a few items here. First one, I sent out an email. The school district has interest in formalizing their use of the current parcel that their practice field is on. So before engaging in further discussions, I just wanted to see if there's any objection to me working with the district to either work out either a lease arrangement, sale, or trade with them, depending on what they come up with through there, but wanted to have it in front of council before I started working with the district on that, just to see if there were any objections with me working. Seen none, I'll continue on with those discussions. One item that may come back before the council, previously, we had authorized transfer of our, one of our revolving loan funds to M Wed for their administration. Still working on that, but what USDA initially said was an approved process. They're having some questions on now, so it may just come back as a cleanup to meet some of their requirements, and it may just be a transfer of those funds to M Wed for their administration, but just wanted you to be aware of it, that that may come back just for a cleanup process in the future. No work session next week, but looking ahead at our first work session in January, we'll probably have a work session on Senate Bill 355, and actually, we may have a resolution of intent for a public hearing on that bill, the regular meeting beforehand. But the work session will talk about what 355 is. It's, again, after discussion, right, state funds from the last legislative session. About $313,000 is allocated to City of Kalispell for repair and maintenance of existing infrastructure, but a pretty broad component with that, so we have some ideas related to it. The first one, you know, we've met the first milestone within that act and basically internal conversations about what projects could be. Second one is to have a public hearing, then it would be establishing a priority list of those potential projects, so I'm look forward to moving that in, but I think there's a March 30th deadline for those funds, so that'll pre- be on that first work session in January, and also on that work session, probably go over the formal presentation we'll be giving as it relates to our levy in March. There may be a good idea just to do that, formally at a work session, just our PowerPoint, walk through it. Not only does it provide education for anyone watching at that time, but also we'll put it on and record it and put it on the website, but also have, you know, the interaction talk but also, uh, we'll put it on and record it and put it on the website, but also have, you know, the interaction talk as it relates to that. So that's what we're looking for. And also, um, you know, I know Eric's been working with some to start some council participation videos for that. And I know, and, and I appreciate the call from Councilman Fisher of, yeah, I put in there in my last email, last call. Uh, probably shouldn't have said last call, because we'll get anyone that wants to participate. We just, I just wanted to start scheduling with that initial round. So, um, that availability will continue to be open as we continue through the process. Just let me know if you, if you want to participate and we'll start working on again, some of those education materials. But starting that education program, um, like I say, we'll have spots running at the movie theater, um, over the holiday season. And then get in and, and start our main education component as we get into the new year in January, as we start looking at that forty-five, sixty-day timeframe through there. So, uh, definitely more to come on that. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Anything from council?
So, oh.
I'll, I'm just going to start again and go my way this way. It's, Mr. Dowd?
I just have a few comments on how extremely disappointed I am at some of the decisions that have been made at the federal level this week that really impact our liberty. Uh, one of them is the inclusion of the FISA or FISA seven oh two, uh, to continue as it was porked into a, uh, a bill that's funding our military. And, uh, I, I didn't actually even catch this until after it happened, but in that same bill, the legisla- uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, Congress pushed in a provision that, um, the president cannot back out of a, uh, of the UN without a two-thirds, uh, approval from Congress, which is, um, unprecedented and actually against the constitution. One, one pillar of government cannot give away its power to another pillar. Uh, it's the same problem I have with the war powers belonging to the president. Um, they, they are explicitly supposed to be for Congress. The president is supposed to be in charge of our, um, alliances and treaties. And, um, you know, I, I just think that sometimes, um, our elected officials above us take too much, um, leeway with our constitution. And, you know, the, the more we go off of it, the more we're just, uh, out of control. So that's all the, I wanted to bring up, uh, during this meeting. Thanks.
It's cause government's been capsized, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Fisher, do you have anything? Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. And I believe you, you meant NATO as opposed to UN.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry.
Um, yeah, a few items. Uh, one, I want to thank, uh, Chief Venizio and Police Department, uh, for their partnership with the Code Girls, uh, on addressing a need for the police department and managing our, uh, vehicle fleet there. I saw that article in the paper and, um, just really impressed by that. We had a need, uh, went out and the community gave these girls an opportunity for real wor- world experience, uh, saved the city some money. Um, it was just a, a great thing to see in the paper and I very much appreciate that. So I want to send my thanks to the chief and the police department. Um, also, uh, wanted to follow up on the email I sent regarding the, uh, uh, DEQ process for, um, soliciting project ideas for climate pollution reduction grant funding. Uh, this is funding coming from the EPA. Um, they, DEQ received a three million dollar grant for planning, uh, for this. So presumably the EPA funding that they're actually planning for is going to be considerably larger than three million, uh, coming to the state. Um, unfortunately, I, I didn't learn about this until recently. The deadline for submitting project ideas is January fifth, uh, so fairly short turnaround. Um, but with our recent discussion of the energy efficiency block grant program, uh, and the, uh, energy tax credit direct pay program, which I did confirm municipalities, uh, are eligible for. Um, those three funding programs, uh, I think bring, uh, an opportunity to the city to, uh, really tackle some energy-related, uh, efficiency items. Um, and I'm just wondering if we can, uh, uh, pull them together in a way that maybe we could go for maybe a little bit broader vision, bigger project, uh, and submit some ideas, uh, to the DEQ. Because my understanding is if we don't give those project ideas before them and it's not part of their application to EPA, then we wouldn't be eligible, is my understanding. So, uh, it'd be great to have some ideas that we can get before them, uh, so they can put that in their grant application.
We meet on the third of January? Can't remember the date. Second. We meet on the second. That's right.
Well, yeah, and a couple of things. Um, so the energy conservation grant has a deadline of April thirtieth. So anything that comes out of the state planning grant and any future allocations will be way beyond that. And that's why we had the work session. But if council does not want me to go forward with the application for those, uh, solar installations, let me know now. Cause the plan is to move forward with those. So they are two entirely separate components. And in terms of, uh, submitting ideas to the state, I think anyone can get on there and submit ideas through their, I think they have a portal through that. So as far as I'm aware, um, I think it's kind of wide open and looking at it broad. I don't think it's a project-specific component, but what would it be? Would it be for installation of this type of energy savings component? Like I say, the state hasn't reached out to municipalities specifically for those. So I, I think their, this stage is just to, what would the state do with those funds if they had them? And would they allow them to go out and would they sub-grant them to municipalities? Would they sub-grant them to, uh, you know, different, uh, for-profit sectors, you know, or, or not, since they're for-profit sectors, but energy providers. I think that's what the overall goal is in terms of that, that stage. But, but they haven't reached out directly to municipalities, at least anything that's come across my desk related to that at this point.
Anything else?
I have one other item.
Yeah.
Uh, just wanted to follow up on, I know some months ago we talked about a homeless advisory committee. Uh, and wanted to check in on the status of that to spend a few months and see if, uh, we've made progress on.
There's had some meetings. We're working on some others. Um, working on, kind of continuing, working with the business community, trying to get those things set up. It's just been, dare I say, herding cats. So, but we're, we've had some meetings. We're still doing some conversations.
And I think they've been beneficial.
Mm-hmm. Anything else from council? Mr. Graham?
Yeah, over, uh, the last, uh, couple, well, certainly the weekend, uh, but maybe from Wednesday on, um, having gone through and read some of the statements that came out from, I think it was the Montana Department of Commerce and then also Flat Electric. Uh, they had nicely worded language about, um, their opposition to, uh, the Biden administration's agreement to, which I guess was signed on the fifteenth. I don't know. But, um, to begin the process of breaching four dams on the Snake River. And I've really tried to think about, you know, where am I, like, why would I talk about this? Why is this hitting me so hard? And it hits me hard because it's going to hit our community hard. And I look at it as it's, I know there's different facets to it, but I look at it as, you know, extreme environmentalism has a human cost to it. And these are, this is clean power. So now we can't even have clean power. We've gone through and we've talked a lot about electric cars. So the one thing I heard about this was that, well, it's not going to come offline until, uh, the replacement energy comes on and everything like that. But, uh, you gotta forgive me, I'm not going to trust the f- federal government to go through and figure out how to put replacement energy out there. I'm old enough to remember a thing called Solyndra. And this is playing with fire. This is playing with people's lives. Northwest Montana, people heat their houses with electricity. It gets twenty below out and you're going to try to go through and, and, and heat your house with, with electricity at the, the, the rates that they'll be because there won't be enough electricity to go around. This is dangerous. This is really dangerous. And literally for the last couple of days, I've been thinking, do I say something about this? Because well, what's it going to matter if I say something? I mean, this is way above our pay grade. But I wanted to say it because I want at least the people on Ward Two to know that this, uh, them taking this very seriously. Because it, it's, it's going to be impactful. Oh, well, then they say it's in ten years or whatever it is, but ten years will come. It'll get here soon enough. And, uh, we might be reaping the rewards from a terrible decision like this. I really didn't want to talk about this tonight. It's our last meeting. I wanted to end the year by going and saying Merry Christmas, but Merry Christmas.
Mr. Graham, thank you.
Well, I'll just, uh, I don't know that I'll go quite that, that, uh, down that path. But, uh, I did want to just take a moment and wish you all a very Merry Christmas, you and your families. It has been a great honor to serve with all of you. We will see what this new year brings with, with, uh, a reelection. And, uh, but I want you all to. Yeah, I, uh, will, uh, we will see you all next year and hope you have a new, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Your Honor. So for speaking of, of people's lives and saving lives, it's the holiday season and one gift everyone can give is the gift of blood and there is a blood shortage. So if you want to come out and give a good gift, come see me at the Red Cross. So sorry for the advertisement, but, and also Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I just wanted to quickly, um, congratulate Pam Carbonari on a retirement, um, well-deserved. Pam was the mayor when I came onto council back in whatever year that was. We don't want the number, but.
Do it.
Long time ago and was a good, um, part of the reason why I decided to run. I knew her and we chatted about it. So, um, I, uh, just, I really want to wish her the best and I think we all do. She's done a lot for the city as well as for the downtown association. And I hope she's able to kick back her feet and relax a little bit. And Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all of you as well as everyone watching. Thank you.
Okay. So never leave it to the accountant to go last. So. You might've been able to tell I'm a little frustrated with my governor. I have a name for him now. Initials are LLG. I'm not going to say it, but I went full Trump on him. Um, fortunately, no one follows me on Twitter. But after watching the governor, listening to the governor go on the radio and blatantly lie to the Montana public about what's happening with local government budgets, I thought, well, let's just take a quick road down seven years of Kalispell's budgets. I've gone through, I've reviewed the numbers and, and when we look at the budget, understand we have budget, we have capital items. We may budget one year, but we may not spend them. That's a carryover project. So we budget it the following year. The other thing we have, grants, money that comes in from the federal government, the state government, gas tax revenue, whatever comes in, we have to budget for. So when I go back through history and I look from twenty seventeen forward, and I can go back further, but further, I just thought seven was a good number. I like the number seven. It, lots of good reasons, number seven's a good number. But starting in twenty seventeen, I said, you know, the city of Kalispell had a budget. And this total budget expenditures was sixty-eight million dollars. Good general fund, enterprise fund, special revenue fund, all these different things that we do. That sixty-eight million dollars is not assessed to the citizens through real estate taxes. A lot of this is user pay for fees. Anything with an enterprise is, it's like a business. I turn on my tap, I pay for the water. It doesn't get assessed on my real estate tax bill where I pay it twice a year. Anything I send down the toilet, same thing. I get, I call the ambulance. I pay the, I get an ambulance bill. I don't pay for that, although we do pay with an allocation because we do have to shove money over just to make the ambulance fund carry its own water. But that's part of what we do. We, that's part of providing these services. So if I go back to twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-three, our budget started at sixty-eight million dollars. Yeah, they've gone up. They've increased because we've had grants. Uh, one-time grants, the budgeted in twenty seventeen, twelve million dollars. Twenty eighteen, twenty, well, nineteen point five million dollars. Twenty nineteen, nine point eight million dollars. Uh, twenty twenty was a small year. It was only five and a half million dollars that we budgeted in grants. Same with twenty twenty-one, it was five. Twenty twenty-two had almost thirteen million dollars in grants. Twenty twenty-three had almost, well, it was just over sixteen million dollars in grants. So when I look at the total budgeted expenditures, I back out grants, I also look at capital projects. Within the enterprise funds, we have to pay for the facilities. Twenty seventeen, we had eight and a half million dollars of capital projects budgeted. I mean, we spent all that money that year, but eight and a half million budgeted. Twenty eighteen, that doubled. It was seventeen. Twenty nineteen, it was twenty-nine million dollars. Twenty twenty is twenty-two million dollars. Twenty twenty-one, it was twenty-eight million dollars. Twenty twenty-two is thirty-seven million dollars. And in twenty twenty-three is forty-three million dollars. We pay through this for savings through what we do, what we collect in rates. We pay for some of this with bonds. It's interesting. I go back and I look and, and as we go back through some of these years, we used to spend capital projects, one point two million dollars in stormwater. Got an MS four permit. What happened? We had to spend more money, didn't we? Yes, we did. Yeah, we did. Twenty twenty, we spent eight point eight million, while we had budgeted eight point eight million dollars. Twenty-one, we had seven point two eight five. Twenty-two, we had six and a quarter. That's a state requirement, correct? That we comply with a state law, DEQ. So Governor Gregg, if you don't like my budgets, get the DEQ off my back. I don't think we want that. We like clean water. We live in Montana for a reason. We want clean water. We want to access, I live in a city. I want access to water that works and sewer that works. So if I back these things out and go, what does it take to operate the city? Essentially, you can look round numbers, forty-seven and a half million dollars in twenty seventeen. Moving forward to twenty twenty-three, it's fifty-five point eight million dollars. Over seven years, it's a two and a half percent increase per year. That's better than what we've seen in the rate in, rate of inflation. So what I want to do, I want to see if the council's interested, but I would love to pass a resolution. We can have a lot of whereas this, whereas the governor doesn't understand municipal budgeting. Whereas the, whereas the, the senate, the chair of the senate budget committee has no clue what happens within city governments. I can even go back to the local government committee, whereas everybody on the local government committee, not one of them sat on a city council. I think we have a opportunity to send out a resolution to invite the governor, Kendall from the Frontier Institute, the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate. Want the House and the Senate Budget Committee Chairs, the Taxation Committee Chairs and the local government chairs to come sit in these chairs around the table with us, review the last seven years of budgets and look at what we're going to do in twenty twenty-four. I'm sick of the lies being peddled out in the public by my governor and by other people writing letters to the editor who have no clue what it takes to run a city. And I think there's other cities in this state that would love to jump on board with that meeting. But I am sick and tired of them pulling potshots from Helena, not understanding what we do to deliver the services our citizens want, need and expect in the city of Kalispell. And to find out that if they go to special session, they want to limit our increases, not to the half, half the rate of inflation. My God, no, we only want city governments to be able to raise their budgets by one percent going forward. In an inflationary period over the last couple of years, we've averaged nine, ten percent, one percent. So Doug, I want you to pick what department gets no raises. I want you to pick which department don't we fund. Cause politically, I don't know, they can tell the chief, no more police. No more fire. No more planning and development. No more retirement for you city employees, for God's sake. You're, you're breaking the back of the tech. This is what it takes to run a city. And the fact that I have a governor that went back and sued the county commissioners to collect all of the money assessed because they didn't do their job and reduce the mills that were levied for education, for education. You know, all that money isn't going to go to education. It's going to end up in the general fund. The fact that the governor did that and then calls it out that we did, that we are doing something wrong. You know what? LLG better put his butt in the seat in here. L L G better put his butt in the seat in here and explain that to me, and I can explain my budget to him. And once he finally understands it, if he has some criticism or some opportunity to give us input, I will take it. But until that point, the governor better shut the hell up.
Here, here.
Now, had to get off, off my chest, it's been driving me nuts. I think one of the other things to note, um, unfortunately, the governor had a, one of his high-ranking officials resign. More on that later. I think I've mentioned that person one other time at the council, because he had some untoward requests of the mayor that the governor wanted. All I'm going to say on that. Now, that said, I want to say there's one thing I really enjoy. I really enjoy being the mayor for the City of Kalispell with this council. I don't enjoy being the mayor of the city, working with state legislators that try to stab us in the back all the time. Try to claim they're Republicans, try to claim they're for the people, no. I enjoy being the mayor with this council and with this staff. I hold you all in the highest esteem, I appreciate serving with you, I think you all do an excellent job. And I've been, over the last ten years, very proud of the job we've done and looking forward to the next two years. So, with that said, as we close out this year, I want to give a gift to the council with an invitation to all those that I named, so we can clear the air within this state. And look forward to New Year's, where hopefully the legislature can start to understand what it takes to run a city. Or at least maybe pick up the phone and call us and ask us, because they've never once called and asked us. So, with that, I want to close out with Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Enjoy the time with your families, enjoy the time off, and we will see everyone, wow, the second of twenty twenty-four. With that, we're adjourned.